Call this reg- oh, sorry, this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The tour of school buildings to review the Board of Education approved 2019, 2020 capital projects will take place Saturday, March 16th at 8:00 a.m. beginning in the middle sex lobby. The next regular Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, March 26th at 7:30 p.m. in the Board of Education meeting room. Um, with that, I'm going to forego my chairperson's report, um, tonight because I think we, they're good on me tonight. Um, I will go ask if there's any public comment this evening. Other than, I'm sorry, I'm not going to move on yet. I'm just going to say thank you to all the people who spoke last night at the Board of Finance hearing and support of the school budget. It is much appreciated and, um, there's been so much talk about schools and so much important talk about why we value our schools and it really, um, shows when we have parents who show up on a weekday night to come talk about what they believe in and what's best they believe for their students and the fact that you all come here every other Tuesday. So, I'm going to say thank you and then I'm going to move on to public comment. Seeing none, Dr. Landon.
Um, just a brief report. Um, I just want to state that, um, March is Board of Education Appreciation Month.
I haven't skipped it every year, guys. I just did it when Dr. Landon was going to go forward.
We didn't hear the round of applause.
Well, I was waiting. We were supposed to have horns here, you know, announcing it. Didn't happen. So, so let me say that, um, I've worked with, um, Boards of Education, I guess now. Um, this will be my 40th year working with Boards of Education and I'm only 60, so that's really great. Um, Board of Education, from my perspective, of all the Boards and Commissions and towns in Connecticut, there is none more important than the Boards of Education because it's easy to do things like approve a budget. It's easy to say you can build a building on a particular site near a wetlands. All of that's important, but nothing's more important than doing things that make the world better for kids. And if you consider that, I mean, take Saturday, for example, Board members are going to be at that, the tours of the schools. Board members give endless hours. They receive no compensation and they get very little thanks. They get plenty of grief, plenty of criticism, plenty of phone calls at all times. Um, go shopping. Board members know they're going to be confronted in the Stop and Shop or some other local venue and people are going to say, "Oh, I think you're doing a great job," but, you know, it's always the but. So, they live with that. And, um, I think, you know, I don't think we should take Board of Ed Appreciation Month for granted because I think we as a community and all of our staff should be thankful to members of the public such as these who voluntarily, um, given of theirs themselves to serve kids. And as Mark Twain once said, I don't remember things well anymore. "Out of the public schools grows the greatness of a nation." And that's really what our people do. So, thank you for the Board of Ed. We have a little token here to-
Thank you.
You may be the first UFRD member to ever to thank us.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, everybody ravel for a minute and then you can all give us grief. Thank you and thank you to the whole administration. We, we enjoy doing what we do because you guys love your job so much. So, thank you. Um, and maybe it's appropriate then that we go on to the update on legislative changes. Um, so, oh, minutes, sorry. Those are important too. It is requested that the Board approve the following minutes. Minutes of the regular meeting had, uh, held on February 26th, 2019. Somebody? Mr. Burke? Mr. Janine? All in favor? That is unanimous with Mrs. Ritchie abstaining?
No, I'm abstaining.
Yes. Any abstaining, just to make it official? Yeah. Okay. Board committee reports. Mr. Burke?
Recently, uh, the Policy Committee met, elected, uh, as truly as Chair-
No, we have to do Board Committee reports.
Oh, no.
Oh.
No.
Okay, we're going to get with it today. It's out of order. It never goes this way. Update on legislative changes. Um, and this is not a, a chair conversation, so input is, um, welcome on these. What I will say is for the regionalization bills, the Governor bills, Senator Duff's bill and Senator Looney's bill, they are all in, just so everyone understands where we are in the process, they are all in committee. The committee must make a decision on what to do with the bills around the beginning of April. Um, the bills are in step seven of a 21-step bill process. Um, the committee can choose to let the bill die. The committee can choose to alter the language of the bill or the committee can choose to move any bill forward as it is written. So, um, there's been a lot of talk of, you know, what do we do? What do we say? I think, um, I think the Board has issued statements. I think the Board has issued testimony. I think we've been very clear, um, with all of the visits from our representatives that, that have happened so far that we've attended, that we are not in favor of these, um, bills. I think at this point, we need to see what comes out of the committee. Um, so, in the meantime, there's some new bills that have come forward. Um, they are very different in nature. Um, I did send to you all the House bill that was recently raised. It was raised over the weekend and given language, uh, Raise Bill Number 7319. It's an Act Concerning the Fiscal Independence of School Districts. Um, I guess if anyone has a chance or thought of how they feel on this bill, now's the time to let me know. Um, there is a public hearing on this matter. I would say the bill is slightly different than the others that we have tackled in that it is not related to the educational needs of children. And that has kind of been our stance on why and how we have commented on bills if it affects the education of children. So, if anyone has any comments on HB 7319, I've been asked for lots of comments on 7319 and I wanted to wait until we were all together, um, before I did that so I could kind of hear all your feedback on it. Um, so, Mrs. McCannan.
So, I did do a little bit of research and some talking around on, on this particular bill. Um, on the face of it, it doesn't make a lot of sense because it doesn't seem like in an environment of looking at efficiencies, which seems to be the thrust of Looney's bill, for example, um, and part portions of Lamont, they would, that there would be a desire at the state level to create two separate governing organizations with duplicative, um, functions. So, why we would all of a sudden have two different collections, two different departments, two different folks who look at bonding, et cetera, et cetera. So, I started asking around about why that would be. Um, most of the, um, people that I either spoke to in government or, or who just had experience outside with, uh, other districts said that this is a very common, um, to have a school budget built or, excuse me, school budget collected like this is very common, but it's not typically done at the town level. Usually, it is done at the regional level. So, there is some supposition that behind this bill is actually the infrastructure to support regionalization. So, in that sense, I think that there is potentially an educational impact embedded in this bill.
So, I don't, there may be a regional, like, regionalization issue embedded in this bill. I don't know if it's entirely true that it's not done at a town level. In New York State, um, this is the very model. Towns go out, towns vote on their budget. That's not saying whether I think this is a good idea or a bad idea. I just think that it is not only done regionally, but yes, I think you made a fair point. It could be done regionally. The language of the bill at the moment speaks to town only. But again, as, as we've learned and we can see, that bill language can change throughout the process. So, um, given that there's such talk about regionalism, regionalism, it's not a, a huge jump to think that they could become connected, but I don't think, I do think in New York, my understanding is this is exactly how towns do it. Um, any other thoughts? Anyone else say? Uh, Mrs. Ritchie.
And I, um, I share Jill's concerns about this particular bill, but I do agree with you that as it stands right now, the way it's drafted, I really feel like it's, I mean, it clearly would throw apart our town charter. There's so many things that would happen and need to be done if this goes through, but I do have concerns that it, it's tied to a bigger plan that I, I wish we knew what that bigger plan is. I don't know if these are just like piecemeal things coming out randomly or there is some sort of plan that we have yet to hear. So, I, it is concerning, all these bills are concerning to me, but I think on this one in particular, I would like to hear someone like the Board of Finance or the, um, RTM opine on it because it does, it does separate those two authorities and it does impact our town charter and it creates a lot of work and a lot of expense for us. And I'm not really seeing, as Jill pointed out, we're going to have two, now two admin- duplicative, duplicative administrative functions at the Board of Ed that's separate from the, the town. So, I-
Yeah, so, what's in, you know, what's interesting and, um, again, not supporting or not, I agree with you. I think actually this bill is a bill that needs to be opined on by a different governmental body than the Board of Education because we are affected by it, but it doesn't affect, um, how we deliver education to children. And in all honesty, it doesn't, we're one of the few towns that carries our budget forward by ourselves. We carry it all the way through to the RTM by ourselves. Oftentimes, our budget or, and other towns, school budgets go to the selectmen in New England and, and the selectmen carry it forward. So, we carry it forward. We talk about our own raises. We, and then at some point, the tax collector collects all the money and we are given an appropriation. In theory, and again, not in support of this bill, the tax collector could just give us the money rather than the town giving us an appropriation and, and we could function. That said, all of that doesn't talk about educating kids. So, I think that commenting on this bill and our public comment on this bill is for, is not really for us right now. I'd rather stick to concerns about how children are educated. Um, but if anyone feels differently, I'm happy to hear it. I think until we have more on the business of this, I, I don't, I don't know where, where we'd put our flag. Uh, I think Mrs. McCannan.
Okay. Sorry, you.
No, I was just going back to your points about the, um, the educational bills, the, the regionalization bills. But there are one bill, and I believe it's Governor, Governor Lamont's bill. I believe it has like a drop dead date where if nothing is done, if nothing is voted on, it goes into effect. That's how I-
So, that's Senator Looney's bill? Senator Looney's bill, um, says that if the legislature fails to act, it just becomes law. Senator Looney at the hearing effectively killed his bill. He came in and said, "I'm not really wed to it."
But don't they have to technically vote on it?
They do, well, they don't have to vote it. They, but technically it still exists and they could move it forward. So, they have not killed the bill yet, but from everyone I've talked to, when the proposer of the bill is not really supportive of the bill and/or the language, um, it, it doesn't seem to get much traction. But to your point, it is not technically dead yet. The, the Governor's bill still seems to have a lot of, um, interest and momentum behind it, as does Senator Duff's. So, um, in terms of regionalization, specifically to your point, your concern about things going into law, and I share the same concern with that a legislator voting on it, the legislature voting on it, is in Senator Looney's bill. Governor Lamont says the studies need to be done by dates and once the studies are done, the legislature needs to consider them, um, but it doesn't put it into law.
But that, for Looney's, Senator Looney's bill, they would have to vote it down to kill it. They, if they do nothing, it survives and goes on.
They have to pass it forward. If they don't pass it forward and they just don't vote on it, it just dies a natural death. So, you know, yeah.
But if they didn't do anything, it just kept going?
No. So, they have to vote to approve a bill and approve the language and then send it on. And if it has money attached to it, it has to go to the Appropriations Committee. So, the Appropriations Committee would then have to carry it forward. There may be other committees it also has to go to. Um, but I think they have lots of bills on their docket that they haven't given hearings to even. So, April will be very interesting for us. I think once we know what they're moving forward and what language we're moving forward, we may need to kind of reconvene and decide based on what they're moving forward, if we have a statement to make to the next step in the process. Mrs. McCannan?
So, where I do see this bill impacting the Board of Education pretty strongly is that it does change our function. It does require us to have someone who understands bonding pretty well. It does require us to have someone, I think, we, it, I think we take a much more fiduciary, I mean, we always have a fiduciary role, but this, this, it does, I believe, change the job description a bit.
Significantly, yes.
Yeah. So, I, I think in that sense, I, I hundred percent agree. It is appropriate for the Board of Finance and RTM to comment because I think this changes, you know, it removes their oversight, but I also believe that this is a change to the way that the Board of Ed would function.
So, I, I think everyone agrees with that. It is a significant change to the responsibilities of the Board of Education and the duties of the, of Board of Education. I mean, the first paragraph changes how we do business. Um, do you have an opinion you want the Board to issue on that or are you just make, letting the Board acknowledge that it is, we acknowledge it's different?
I, I think, I think we should acknowledge it. I, I think, I think my question would go back to where you sort of started, which is, um, if we wanted to say anything, I think we could maintain that we stand by the fact that we support bills that are looking at educational impact and this, this is one and that we would always, uh, that this, the educational impact of anything put forward would be our highest priority or something to that effect. Um, because I, again, I think this is heavily, this, this is administrative back office. I think there are, there are, in my opinion, educational, or educational implications. I can't say that there are impacts, but I think there, there are potential implications. And so, I think there is potentially a place for saying, um, you know, we stand by making changes that are really more educational in nature.
So, I think if I hear everyone, if I can just summarize, because at some point, we'll be asked again, and I know the, the press has already asked, what, what we're saying is we are watching this bill and we are watching it with interest and we're watching it carefully. Um, and we will continue to do so. Our highest priority is to comment on the bills that have educational impact upon children because they are our first priority, as are our communities. And kind of restructure, administrative restructuring is important to us, but, um, you know, we will continue to watch this and see where it goes before we, before we kind of react because we don't really know what this is yet. We don't have enough information really to know what this is yet. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Is the, is the timing similar with this bill as with the education bills in terms of if within two weeks, there'll be some sort of vote as to whether or not to push this further along?
You know, I haven't checked, but this is not in Planning and Development. Education rejected this bill. Um, they rejected this bill, I think, on the very grounds that we're talking about. Some people argue that there is an impact and what it would really do is let the taxpayers know exactly what's being spent on education. Other people, um, and it would allow boards to hold reserves, therefore taxation on education, money, money that was taxed for education would stay with education. I mean, there's a lot going on with it and that's what I mean. I, I would agree with Mrs. McCannan at this point. This is administrative. Um, all bills must hit the floor. It's a short session in July.
Yeah.
So, I imagine they might be on similar deadlines, that everything has got to either, whatever committee's moving forward is April, but I have not checked with, um, Planning and Development on that.
The hearing is Friday.
Yes, the public hearing is this on Friday. I do not believe we have a statement for this public hearing on this.
No.
Unless anyone is telling me otherwise. I think this is one that we need, we need to watch a little more and/or the Board of Finance and RTM need to talk because it's, their powers are, um, while we might be gaining powers and there, there might be people we need to hire and bring on, um, I imagine both the RTM and the Board of Finance feels that they are being stripped of certain powers. And so, I, I do think that we should allow them to take lead on this, um, if they have a strong voice and opinion on it.
Well, I mean, personally, I'm opposed to it, the way it's written today, but I don't know as a board what statement we would go forward with.
So, I think that's it. We all may have personal opinions on the bill, but I'm not sure if the Board of Education has a position on it, unless I hear one from y'all.
No, I think at this point, this was a good conversation. I think we have to get through Friday and perhaps by the next time we have a Board of Ed meeting, we will have heard more and seen more in terms of public comment and comment from the legislature that, that views it. And at that point, it might be more appropriate to talk more about what our response is to it, but I think you summed it up in that our response should be to continue to focus on what affects the education of our children.
Okay. Any other thoughts or concerns on this?
Well, to that end, um, could we have sort of, there's enough bills in the ether with enough rapidity. I would love to have this sort of update on a regular basis, at least until things settle a bit. If not, you know, it's, there, there are just a lot of bills. It's helpful, I think, for us as a board to all know, be on the same page about where things are, if they're being considered, if there's any impending action for us.
Yeah. I mean, so I would urge everyone to follow it. I now spend a lot of time talking to the legislators and following bills. So, I think, um, as there's action, certainly it will be on agendas. I, I think, you know, weekly updates on this, education's not going to tell us anything week to week. If there's any new information, I, I am happy to put this back on so that we are all up to date on any new factual information and/or any action by any committee.
And to, to the extent that you're having conversations on our behalf, it would be helpful to have that in the chair report so that we're aware that they're happening.
I think I have every time.
I'm just adding to the conversation that, that, you know, if, if you're having conversations, we'd love to hear it and then would love updates as there's action. Great.
All right. So, just so everyone knows, all conversations I have had at this point have been shared with the Board. Um, you know, finding out when the, um, my latest conversation is when do your committees vote? April and, and you heard it this evening. So, I will bring you back as much information as I can get. Anything else? Anyone? Okay. All right. Board Committee reports. Say that of order. Mr. Burke?
Uh, recently, the Policy Committee met, expressed its purpose of electing Chair. As left the Chair, we discussed the, the kinds of, uh, things we expect to see in a little bit of, uh, process, but there was no specific policy change that we discussed coming up to bring before you at this point.
Thank you. Any other Board Committee reports? Mr. Janine?
So, the Oxbridge Elementary School Building Committee met, uh, last Thursday, March 7th. We did a tour of schools. Um, we toured the Oxbridge School, which was led by Dr. Luke Fors Shaw and, um, Mike Lynch, Director of Facilities. Um, most of the committee members were there, along with our first selectman, Jamie Stevenson, our superintendent, Dr. Landon and Mr. Feeney also. Um, the next meeting for the Oxbridge Building Committee has not been scheduled. However, the request for a proposal for Architectural and Engineering Design Services has gone out. Um, it is posted on the website. Um, and-
On the town?
On the town website, um, it's posted. And just to give some dates, the, um, deadline for submission of RFP questions is March 28th. Uh, the deadline for submission of the RFP is April 4th. So, those are two important dates coming up.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you both for your work on those committees. Um, I do believe Mr. Maroney is not here, but the Facilities Committee didn't meet and get back up and running. I'm sure he will give us a report when he is back next time. Uh, we will move on to Presentations and Discussion. Presentation and discussion on Darian High School Second Semester Enrollment Distribution Report. Dr. De Silva and Mrs. Dunn. Mr. Rivera.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Um, we're here to give you an update on the Fall Report that, uh, presents the class sizes at the high school. Um, because of the nature of the semester courses, there are some changes to that and so we always bring a spring to spring comparison as well as a fall to fall comparison. Um, I want to, um, thank Mr. Rivera and also Meg Emanuelson for their work on the schedule. Um, it is, I'm proud of the fact that we start from scratch every year, beginning with what students would like to take. So, we start with that registration process and the entire schedule from the year before is gone and we build from, from those requests. Um, and it is a long process. It's a, uh, an ongoing process. It's, you know, it's not even locked in until we open the school. Um, and even after that, there are all kinds of changes that take place as we respond to the individual needs of, of our students. And so, um, the work that gets done throughout the summer, um, the balancing that takes place, the, the looking at individual students, um, I think it's something that is a special nature of Darian High School, that we spend as much time as possible looking at the needs of individual kids. Um, and as they come to us, um, need to change levels, need to, um, make decisions that, um, they've discovered over the summer that they want to move in a different direction. We try to support those changes, which requires us shifting, um, those individual schedules. Um, to the best of our ability, we want them to be able to be an orchestra. We want them to be able to take ASR. We're always trying to solve that problem. Um, and that's a credit to our, um, Guidance Department that, that works so hard to do that. So, I will introduce Mr. Rivera, who built the schedule, and he'll go through the report with you.
Thank you, Ellen. Um, I'll go through each chart. They're similar to the ones in the Fall, so I won't spend a lot of time explaining them. I'll point out anything that, um, is significantly different. Um, and then at the end, if there's any questions that need clarifying, um, please offer them. Um, Chart 1, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. It's from the Board Policy. Um, Table 2, um, goes over our average class sizes for each of the academic areas. Um, the top part we separate out as part of our four, five core academic areas. Um, and you can see there was not significant difference from last spring to this spring. Um, our overall class sizes for these academic areas are still at 19. Um, below that are most of our electives and some of our supported classes. Um, Table 3 looks at the average load that each teacher has in each of these academic areas, which again, um, there is not a very significant number of a change from last spring to this spring. Uh, Table 4 looks at the overall distribution of our courses and filters them out from below 16 to that middle range, 16 to 20 and then above 20. So, again, in comparison from last spring, um, there isn't a significant change as far as our courses, um, percentage-wise from one, uh, uh, one season to the other. Table 5 looks at the number of classes that we have that are under 10, um, which again, is fairly consistent from the Fall and also from last spring. Um, table, and a lot of these courses, just so you know, um, are some of our, uh, supported classes. Some of our classes where our students are taking the lab class to help get them support in the more general ed class that they're in. Uh, Table 6 looks at the number of classes that we have that are, um, larger. So, we'll look at that as above 25. In the Fall, we had two. Uh, in the Spring, we have four. Uh, that is a result of students that were in an upper level class. They were in accelerated class and they leveled down. Um, and in order to get them, uh, to have a minimum impact on their schedule, uh, those two students went into classes that bumped them up to 25. They were two geometry classes. They were in accelerated geometry and then they got bumped down to, uh, the standard geometry class. Um, the other two classes were leftover from the report I did in the Fall. One was a pre-calculus course and the other one was our, uh, one of our Spanish For honors classes. Um, and then below that, you could see what departments they came in. And then the last table at the bottom looks at our overall, uh, counselor load and the averages from the previous years. Um, when we ran this report now in the Spring, we were, uh, at , uh, 1,414 students that we were scheduling for, which you can see the progression from the past couple of years is obviously, uh, increased. And I think you'll hear a little bit more about overall, um, enrollment a little bit later tonight, or at least at kindergarten later on today. Um, so, that's the report in a nutshell. Again, I didn't get into too much detail, but if there's any questions, any clarity, please let me know.
Mrs. Dunn.
Um, hi. How are you? Thank you for the report. So, when I looked at the, the classes that went over, 20, up above 25, 25 or above, I looked at geometry and in looking at the 300 geometry, I know that's the big ninth grade class. Those numbers, I mean, as a Board, we've sort of, prior to Dr. Landon's arrival with Dr. Brenner, we talked a lot about sort of staying in that optimal range and there are seven that are above optimal of those eight or nine classes. They, it just strikes me as, as high numbers. Are we looking at that for next year for, um, Algebra II, Regular and Honors and making sure that we sort of keep more in the optimal range than towards the high end?
Yeah. I mean, Dr. Bellows definitely takes a look at the, the changes that happen as the semester goes on and then tries to predict, but obviously we're predicting a little bit. Um, so, yeah, we definitely do look at this from year to year. The department chairs look at the trends and try to plan accordingly based on that.
Yeah, because that, it really stands out in terms of the ones above 22 in, in that. And I know it's the, the ninth grade bubble.
Yeah. And the, and the other thing that is tricky sometimes too is especially for the ninth grade classes, is a projection or a prediction of who's actually going to come up from eighth grade to ninth grade, uh, from year to year. And we do adjust sometimes based on, um, if in August, we realize we don't have as many withdrawals as we were anticipating, then we'll go ahead and shift things at the last minute. But we do have a projection. We look at the past couple of years to see what those percentages were and try to plan that way.
Okay, great.
But, but it changes. But, yeah, we definitely do look at it every year.
Okay, thank you.
And just to expand on that, because I, I see that also as the case with the, the pre calc classes, which is, I guess, the junior, pretty much junior.
It could be junior or senior, some sophomores, but yeah.
Right. So, it might have that same carryover to next year. I don't know what the typical- I don't know what the typical flow is from the pre-calc. I guess they could do just calculus.
From pre-calc, they could go to calculus, they could go to college math, they could go to problem stat. There's a couple of different avenues that they can go to.
So that could maybe clear up that problem for some of those students.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Dineen?
On the table number five, on the number of small classes under 10, what's the smallest class size that we have up there?
I believe it's five. If I, if I'm doing it by memory, I think it's our AP Physics course. One of our AP Physics courses has about five students in there. For what's being calculated here, I believe that's what the number is the smallest one.
And Principal Dunn, to your point earlier, Social Studies seems to be consistent in having six and English two. Is that strictly scheduling and making sure these students are kind of getting the classes they want in terms of their overall curriculum schedule?
The English and...
There seems to be over the last bunch of semesters.
Oh, oh, the way they're distributed, yeah. Those are probably, that's due to the lab section. Remember the supported sections that are taught by, a Western Civ teacher will take a group of students out of their class and work with those students. So those classes are particularly small. Some of those are three and four. So that's why you're, you're seeing more there. In history, we have lab classes in math and we have lab classes in English.
Okay, thank you.
So that's where those are coming from.
Good, thanks.
More questions? In, in, this might be a better question for Christina Mauricio over in Foreign Language, but as I look at it, French one has 15 kids, 15 kids in a class. We have one section. I, I'm looking at our French versus our Spanish section and part of it is choice, right, at the middle school. It's one of the few areas, I brought it a couple of times, where we actually, middle schoolers have choice. But if I look at French two, it's got 35 kids in it. If you think, okay, last year they were probably roughly 15 kids. We've got about 20 kids, it seems like, that are retaining in this program from middle school. Do, do we know why we are losing so many kids in that language area? Is it just that Spanish is all the way through? Are we looking at strengthening a middle school program to carry kids? But it just seems, I've got 1,000 Spanish sections and I've got, you know, my French sections and, and at low numbers. I, I would, I would expect to see some kids continuing what they're doing in middle school or, or the numbers just dwindling everywhere.
That's your French two, so just to...
They're going with French two.
Or they're sophomores who took French year, that's what I'm saying. So we know we have French one. So we're clearly not retaining kids in middle school into this program. They're switching when they come to high school. Do we know why they're switching?
Of course, some are switching to Mandarin.
Yes.
Some are switching to Latin, so they're not, they only have those two choices in middle school. So as they get to the high school, those options open.
So I guess what I'm asking is, it seems like we are retaining kids in the Spanish program and kids are choosing to switch when they get to high school in the French program. Do we know why that's happening?
So I think it's a better question for Christina, who's out on maternity leave, but upon her arrival, we will be sure to get the answer to that question. It may be bigger than that and wider than that, so I wouldn't want to answer out of turn without having her speak to it.
What the French numbers are in middle school. I'm assuming they're much lower than the Spanish.
I'm just trying to look at viability of programs, yeah, yeah. But if Christina can, that's great. Deb?
Just building on that a little bit, I'm just curious, how many continue into their senior year with the foreign language? Do you find that most keep with the foreign language or could part of the problem be that not all kids are taking that fourth year of language in high school?
I don't have the exact stat for you, but I would say the majority do follow through and do four years. We do have some students, quite frankly, that will only do three, whether it's, they do freshman, sophomore, or junior. We also have some students that are going through the articulation process that are in special education that maybe will take a year off from language in that ninth grade year to help with them transition into high school and then will pick up with a language in sophomore year and then do three years that way. So it varies a, a little bit. But the majority, I would say, do, do it for four years, but clearly not everybody.
So my, I think, you know, my interest is, are we, are we retaining kids?
Right, are we losing them to, are we losing them specifically out of French?
Yeah.
And why?
Yeah, well, I just, again, expand on that. I just, I looked at Mandarin, I looked at Latin, it does seem that they, they, when you get to that four, you know, fourth year, there is, at least Mandarin, there is a drop off. It seems like Latin, there might, it's a three, four Latin, so there's...
There's a combined, there's one combined section. One runs by itself and the other one's combined.
Right, so I'm just, you know...
There's definitely a drop, I'm seeing here. Like I said, there's some, but the majority of the kids do follow through and take it for senior.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Dr. Landon?
I, I think people generally are going to have to come to the realization that kids are making decisions on world language based upon what they think it holds for them in the future. So we have seen throughout the state and our neighboring states, a huge decline in the numbers of kids taking French. You do see a surge in Spanish because of our, the North American Free Trade Agreement, which, you know, has a lot of stuff going on in Mexico and South America, Central America, and the fact that there's a growing Latino population in the United States. I think that there are a lot of kids who are signing up for Spanish for those very reasons, for their long-term financial interests, career interests and the like, and their everyday living. Latin long has been a, a, a solid course for those who are looking to enhance their grammar and the, you know, the root issues in English and Latin. And finally, Mandarin has become hot in every single district, again, because of our trade relationships and the involvement of our country with China. So I think what we're going to see is a further decline in the numbers of students selecting to take French, greater increases in Spanish, continuing interest in Latin and a, and a surge again in Chinese.
Any other board questions? I, I have a question about our learning centers. Are we seeing increased numbers of identification at the high schools such that we have more sections? Are these, are these a normal number of sections you would expect to see at the high school? It seems like we have a lot of sections and I imagine with scheduling, that's why we have some that are particularly small or not and also based on need. I'm just wondering, are you happy with the sections? Do you see these sections increasing, decreasing, fairly constant?
I mean, I would say from year to year, there is some fluctuation, but for the most part, these have been pretty consistent with the number of sections that we have. They're obviously driven by IAPs and what is in there. Most of our students in special education will have at least one learning center. Some will have more than one based on their, the support that they need. But I would say, you know, based from year to year, they're fairly consistent. But there is fluctuation based on what comes out of those PPT meetings.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
We will move on to the update on kindergarten enrollment for 2019, 2020. Dr. De Silva.
All righty, so as you know, each month, beginning around February, we update you on our kindergarten numbers. And so you'll see that they have increased slightly since last month. As of right now, Henley and Holmes are running a little bit lower than they were last year. However, we still have a few months to go, so we'll see if there's any changes.
Mrs. Ritchie?
I, I just don't have the numbers available, but are, are we trending the way we expected to?
Of the five elementary schools, the Oxbridge, Royal and Tokenique are trending very similarly as they were last year. Henley and Holmes are trending slightly lower. Actually, Holmes is not, I apologize. Henley is trending slightly lower than it was last year.
Thank you.
So I think last year it was about 61 and this year it's about 51.
Thanks. Mrs. Stein, can you just probably best to discuss the ELP numbers over here?
I can do that.
Oh, okay.
So...
I was going to, surely I hadn't talked to it, but when we, I thought at one of our budget meetings, the numbers were in the 90s, but maybe I'm wrong. And then it, so a month ago, it was 71 and now we're at 108. Is that typical and identified children or is that, what is the 108? It seems high and it seems like a big jump from February.
So this is based off of the number of students that will enroll at some point throughout the year.
Got it, that's what I...
So that's where the number in a...
So anyone aging in?
Correct, correct. So the number does, you'll see it, it will, at some point, it'll become a little bit flatter, but it is based off of the number of children that might register throughout the school year.
And it has a typical peer attached to that.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Because you've just called for registrations, right? So not terribly surprising that there's a bump now.
Mm-hmm. That's correct. And last year it was the same thing. It went up about 20 from my report in February to my report in March.
Okay.
And I apologize, the numbers from Henley last year were about 20, 20 children different, but again, they change month to month. It's just a matter of when. And we actually do force our principals' hand, so even if they have the registration, but it's not complete, we don't count that student, so they may have a slew that just needs a birth certificate or something like that. And so we do hold tight on completed packets when we give you these numbers.
Mr. Dineen?
Could you, would it be all right, could you possibly put last year's numbers on the bottom there? Add a column?
I will.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCammon?
On the ELP number, in our enrollment projections, we did hold it to 90, so...
Where I was getting the number from?
Yeah. So at some point, I think we need accurate ELP enrollment projections, whether it's from Malone and McBroom or from Mr. Feeney or, you know, whatever model you choose to use. I think we, I would like to have one.
I knew there was a 90 somewhere.
I think, I think that's kind of where we, we keep getting, stuck is the wrong word, but we keep seeing 90 in the projections and then we see higher numbers in other areas?
Right, and the challenge would be, and I don't want to speak out of turn and surely jump in if that's, if I'm not speaking accurately, but the challenge is, is based on the number of students who have been classified as having a disability, then we have to match that number throughout the school year, right? Based on when they're coming in, we have to match a typical peer. And so it is somewhat difficult to project and I know that they work hard to go to the neighboring preschools and all of those other pieces that they do to anticipate children that may be coming to us. However, that is, you know, I won't speak for Mr. Feeney, but in terms of projecting that out, it really does depend on the number of students and I'm not sure that anyone can predict the number of students who may have a disability that are going to come into our program and then to match obviously a typical peer.
I'm, I'm sure it's difficult. I just, I don't know if, if I recall reading the Malone and McBroom report correctly. I don't believe we gave them, I think we just said 90 is the number. I didn't, I don't think that they did the science. And while I appreciate it's extremely difficult, it would be nice to know that somebody has at least looked at it.
We can look at that. We can look at that. And 90 was a number that was discussed at one of the budget meetings, so we can go back and look at that. Can I provide that?
I'm only pausing because I'm thinking of a question. The 90 then, we could say, is our best estimate, taking our high and low. Is that true, Mr. Feeney? And then we recognize that in some years, we may go over. And if I remember correctly, from Mrs. Straiton's report to us, that she tries to, early on in the year, over-enroll typicals to be able to keep pace if we are to, need to educate children who have needs throughout the year.
Right, because children don't necessarily want to re, want to enroll into a preschool program in December.
Yeah, so I think maybe what we need to do is, at a board level, better explain the justifications for the 90. We're not asking you necessarily to cha, to change the number if you feel strongly about the number. But again, at some point, maybe the next update, tell us why that's a good number to have or why that's a good average as a, as something for us to use as a predictor, even though it might be incredibly difficult. And then the board has to acknowledge that it could change. But I do think this 90 number keeps coming up and Mrs. McCammon, Mrs. Stein and I keep, keep kind of circling around it, trying to get comfortable with it. So that'd be great. Any other questions? Okay, we will move on to action items. Mrs. Sion, the personal action report dated March 13th.
So we have a new personal action report, copies of which are in the back of the room. We have resignations and retirements, many of which are in response to our retirement incentive notification. And we are happy to ask you to approve Megan Emanuelson as our permanent director of guidance, grade six through 12.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the PAR dated March 13th, 2019? Mr. Brown, so moves, and Mr. Burke seconds. All in favor? That is unanimous by who's left? Mrs. McCammon, Mr. Burke, Mr. Brown, Mrs. Stein, Dineen. All right, public comment. Please state your name and address, Mrs. Best.
Hi, Julie Best, 38, Red Rose Circle. I had two questions or thoughts related to 7319, which is an awkward read certainly, so I'm definitely not 100% clear on it. I understand your point that there are other states that have this kind of a setup, but I, I don't understand, I can't see why they would, why they would want it for us if it's not a step toward the regionalization or some bigger change like that. So that's what I'm struggling with. I can't see what the benefit is to see, yes, this is just a better idea for us. It certainly doesn't seem more efficient. So I'm struggling with that and certainly we need to hear more discussion on it. And then my other thought or question is whether or not this has an educational impact, a change like this. I would think that just taking on such a different area of responsibility, which is not what this board does right now, would be enough of a distraction, that it would have an effect on being able to serve the students or the kids or the schools. So those were just a couple of thoughts.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment this evening? With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. McCammon, so moves. Mr. Burke, seconds. All in favor?
It's too early.
That is all of us?
Stop it.